I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good evening, Cheryl. Will you do the roll call, please?
President.
Here.
You.
Here.
President.
Okay, with out objection, I would like to add the Cooperative Fiber Optic Network Grant application to the consent agenda and the late materials for the library to the new business.
No objections.
No objections. So I am looking for an approval of the agenda.
I'll move that we approve the agenda as presented here.
Second.
All right. So moved by Councilwoman Kelly and seconded by Councilman Couch. And the consent agenda will include items 1 through 6, including the fiber optics grant. So we actually have both a special guest and a presentation tonight. We're going to start actually with the presentation.
Madam Mayor, point of order.
Yes?
Did we approve the agenda or the consent agenda?
The agenda, sorry. The agenda. Okay, so motion to approve the consent agenda 1 through 6 with the fiber optics grant. All right. So approved by Councilwoman Carnegie and seconded by Councilwoman Kelly. All right. So we're going to actually move the celebrating 40 years of business ahead of Relay for Life. And before we do that, we need to pass the resolution that goes along with the presentation. So you'll see it's Resolution Number 988-1, Celebrating 40 Years in Business. With out objection, can we approve?
So I move to approve the resolution of 988-18, Celebrating 40 Years in Business, Bobby Kelly of Cascade Fabrics.
That is a resounding second. Okay, so motion passed. So could I get Bobby to come forward, please?
Bobby, so we have here a resolution for you, being business for 40 years, Resolution 988-18, and this is a resolution congratulating and thanking you for your 40 years of business there in Cedar Wully. And it reads, whereas Cascade Fabrics was founded in Cedar Wully in Washington on May 10, 1978, it's a big day to mark and the birth of the town. Whereas Cascade Fabrics has operated continuously for the past four decades, whereas Cascade Fabrics has maintained holding classes of the good days, helping to generate and maintain holding groups. And whereas many of our customers do not care. And whereas Bobby has always kept up with the trends, providing whatever materials and motions for enthusiastic customers to part with the projects. And whereas maintaining and operating a downtown business for the last four decades has helped keep Cedar Wully vibrant, providing goods and services that are much needed. And whereas the majority of the city council of the city of Cedar Wully desires to honor Bobby's great contribution to the downtown through 40 years of business at Cascade Fabrics to now, therefore, let it be resolved by the city council of the city of Cedar Wully as follows. Section 1, the city does hereby recognize and honor Bobby Kelly for 40 years of business in Cedar Wully, passed by majority vote of the members of the Cedar Wully City Council in the spring of 2018. It's a little now, you're late. (APPLAUSE). As the city, we set immunity, which should be recognized by the owner of the faithful customer base in Cedar Wully, the shots local, window of 40 years. So there the position we are in for this. Staying for 40 years is pretty faithful, but it's supposed to be very sensitive. So all of you should know.
(APPLAUSE). So I thought that we approved the agenda, but I guess we need to vote. Is that right? So approving the agenda, and that is taking the real estate, the new materials, late materials actually, of the real estate acquisition for the new library to the new business. And then, of course, the grants, adding them to the consent agenda. So do you have a motion?
We had the motion and the second.
Well, that's what I thought.
Just didn't.
We need a vote. No, I think there's a motion and a second for both the consent agenda and the resolution. We just didn't have a council vote on those.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And then a second vote for the resolution, just for the minutes.
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect.
Oh, such the details. So I know we have Kim here. And is there someone else who's going to speak with you, Kim, regarding Relay for Life?
Yes, I have Amber as well.
Amber, okay. Do you want to come forward and tell us about Relay for Life?
Which way should we? I don't really know which way we should talk here.
You should address the city council.
Okay, thank you. So I'm Amber. And Barb is passing out some packets to you about Relay for Life. I am on the volunteer committee, and I am the team ambassador. I am also a cancer survivor. Relay for Life in Skagit County is in its 31st year, which is remarkable because Relay for Life as a whole has been around 32 years. So Skagit County is doing pretty remarkably. We are doing something great this year. We are bringing the event back to an overnight event, which it has not been for the past few years. So it is June 9 from 2:00 p.m. to June 10 at 10:00 a.m. at the Burlington Edison High School. We have been working really, really hard to really get more county involvement. I think that there has been kind of this feeling that because it's in Burlington, it's a Burlington event, which it is not. It's a whole county event. So we have been really hitting the streets in a lot of cities. We have been, I have personally been in high schools. We've been down businesses. We have gotten some remarkable buy-in at the city level. The city of Burlington has, the mayor will be attending, as well as the chief of police and the assistant fire chief. All three of them will be getting in the dunk tank. And they have an entire city team. The whole city employees are involved. As of yesterday, I convinced the mayor of Mount Vernon to attend, and so she will be coming and walking. Today, I spoke to the mayor of La Conner, and he is planning to attend. So we're really, we're really working hard to get more cities involved. The Relay for Life is something really special because it does something really unique. It pulls a lot of survivors in. So our very first lap is just for survivors. Our second lap brings in caregivers. And in our third lap, we bring in veterans. And then we're also going to bring in first responders. We really want all of the firemen and the EMTs, paramedics, and the policemen to join in that walk because they're a really big part of what cancer survivors go through. I have personally had paramedics from two different cities, because of where I live, at my home four times just since August. So we really want them to be there, to be a part of that with us, and to honor them as well. Around 10:00 p.m., when it gets dark, we do the luminaria walk, which if you have never been to a Relay for Life, then I would say this is the time that you want to come, is during that time. We have bags that we decorate, and we put a really bright glow stick in them. And they're to honor someone that has been lost or is currently fighting cancer. And we line the whole track with them. We put them up in the bleachers. And we do a moment of silence, and people walk with, I think they're going to be glow sticks this year, but they walk the track in silence. And it's, it is an incredible, incredible experience. And so that's the time when we really, like I said, if you've never been to an event, we really want to encourage you to try that out. We also are having, starting May 25, it's called Paint the County Purple, which we are working hard again to get cities involved in. So from May 25 up until Relay, we are asking businesses and cities to do exactly that, to paint their towns purple. So for businesses, that means decorating their storefronts purple. We're putting up giant purple ribbons in cities down along posts. We're putting up posters. So really, any way you can be creative. The hospital here in Cedar Wully, they're going to do purple gloves during that time. They're decorating their cafeteria. They're doing some really fun, going to try to wear purple scrubs. And the cancer center are doing some really fun things. So already here in Cedar Wully, I would say you have some great places that have some really good buy-in. So we're really excited about that. So I think those are all things that are happening. I personally have been, like I said, really reaching out to get city officials, city councils, high schools involved. And so I really want to invite you all to attend, to come, even if you just come and walk one lap, we really want you there. If you want to get in the dunk tank, we really, you know, we want to see that. If you have a police officer that you want to see in the dunk tank, we want to see that. You know, it's for a really good cause. It gets people really, it gets people really, really excited. And so the other part of what we want to do is, Kim and I just both want to share why we're involved in Relay for Life, because we think that's important as we talk about this. And really just in reminding people that there are stories like ours, probably in every room you enter in all parts of your day. I was diagnosed with cancer at four months old. They told my parents I would not live to see two years old. I just celebrated my 35th birthday on Saturday. There you go. It has been a very long journey for me, and it's not over. I have a rare type of cancer that only about 30 other people have. I've been through chemo, radiation, lots of different things I've had. Now, someone just asked me on Monday how many surgeries, and it's near 55 surgeries on my face, just to remove tumors. That what they found is if we let them grow, they become dangerous. So we don't let them grow. I just had surgery in February, and on Monday, I am going to be at the cancer center starting infusion treatment. So my journey is not over. And Relay for Life for me is so important because I have a very rare kind of cancer. And it is not a kind of cancer that people are going to have a walk for. There's not going to be a month dedicated to raising money for my cancer. And people aren't going to be talking about it. Relay for Life gives me a platform to talk about it. Relay for Life and American Cancer Society, if one of my kids grows up and wants to be a cancer researcher, American Cancer Society will fund research for them to look for a cure for a cancer like mine. They are the second largest cancer research funder, second only to the federal government. So for me, this like truly is my life like on the line. And so it is really, really personal. And so it's so important that people show up, that even if you're not donating, even if you're not getting in a dunk take, that you just come and you walk a lap, that you put on a purple t-shirt, that you decorate your storefront purple, whatever it is, that in some way you choose to participate. So I'm going to let Kim talk for a couple minutes.
Hi, my name's Kim Taxall, and I too am a cancer survivor. I actually, I relayed for Life for a long time, for my father, my grandmother, a lot of people. And then just over two years ago, I was diagnosed with breast cancer myself. I had a very aggressive breast cancer. It was a fight for my life. Only 20% of the women survive what I've gone through. I've experienced 11 surgeries in the last two years. I actually worked here in Woolly for seven years at Woods Logging Supply. I worked up at the Skagit Speedway for 10 years. And I'm an implant here, or transplant here into Woolly. I've been here 18 years, but I can tell you, through my journey, this last couple of years, I had so many first responders at my home. I can't even remember how many ambulance rides I had. I can't even remember who was in and out of my home. I chronicled a lot of my cancer journey on Facebook because I wanted to be positive throughout the entire experience. So I'm sure some of you are actually familiar with my journey. I'm actually going to be working with the city of Cedar Wully. Monica with Plomera Breezes Travel has asked me to help with the city of Cedar Wully. So I'm actually going to be going and visiting most of the businesses this next week. So if city council or the police, Lynn, if the police get called and they start talking about the broad walking downtown, asking for money and donations and different things, I am legit.
That's not really that weird, anyway.
I actually walk downtown and pick up garbage, too, for y'all. So but I just want to just remind you that Relay for Life is just so important. Over 1.6 million people a year are diagnosed with cancer. And regrettably, for women, that's 73% rate compared to the 27% for the men. I apologize. I still deal with a lot of things, short-term memory glitches are one of the things that I deal with. Cancer is very expensive. My journey in the last two years has been $1,300,000. Luckily, I was double insured through my journey. There are so many people here in Skagit County that do not have the benefit of being insured. It's sad. You know, I spent 19 months in chemotherapy at Skagit Cancer Care Alliance across from the Mount Vernon Hospital, and just to see all the people that had to come in for cancer. The youngest I met was four, the oldest I met was 92. But they're all residents of Skagit County. And I just would really, really like to see the city council get behind some things and help, help just invigorate the Relay for Life once again. Because I'm sure all of us have someone in our family at one, at one point in time have been affected by the scourge that cancer really is. And if you haven't been affected, regrettably, in this lifetime, you will be. I was declared in cancer remission April 3 of last month. So I'm still fighting the good fight, too. So, you know, come out, support us. You'll see me in the community. And we just thank you for your time. Thank you.
Kim and Amber?
Yes.
What is your specific ask of the council? What is it you want from us?
So for one, we would love to have the mayor attend the event, if that's possible. That's, that's one ask. We would like to have all first responders be invited to the event. So whether that's by email, if that's us coming and talking to them, however that happens, we would like to have all first responders invited. We would like to have some kind of invitation go out to all city employees. So what I have done for other cities is I have an email composed that has some really great details, and then all the ways to get involved that I've just sent. And then I think this has been copied and pasted and sent and out, which I'm happy to do. So we'd like to do that. And then I think Monique has already like covered to get permission for Paint the County Purple with the ribbons and stuff. So we're looking for that as well. And then, I mean, really the big ask here is to just come and to invite people. We would love to see a city team, if you guys could put together a team. And a team can be two people, it can be 200 people. So however that looks for you. So those are the things that we're asking for. Like I said, I do, I have an email that has all of that stuff, like bullet pointed and really clear, that I'd be happy to send wherever the best place is to send that, so that you have it all.
I have to say, so I appreciate your invitation. I actually spoke with Monique a couple months ago when she was putting all this together. I found it quite exciting and was greatly disappointed when I discovered that the date is the date that I'm actually going to be out of town. I did make a hefty donation, I will tell you that.
Thank you.
And I did get our auxiliary. We, I think we donated over $1,000 or about $1,000 as well.
Thank you.
We did what we could. So I apologize. I would love to participate, but I apologize.
Madam Mayor, that's when the pro tem mayor would step in, right?
Thank you, Carl.
You're welcome.
I'd be happy to. Yeah, of course. I was planning to be there anyway. So whatever.
And it would be great if you let us know, like if there's a time you think you would be there, because we want to acknowledge that you're there, thank the city for attending. I mean, we want, we want to make sure that we're saying thank you to all the cities that are there and for attending. So and the same for first responders. We want to make sure that all the cities that are having their first responders show up, that we're, you know, honor and loud. It's Monique is going to have literally a headset on that she can speak loudly into. And so we want to make sure she's saying thank you and acknowledging the people that are there. So.
So in past years, the city council has authorized the installation of the purple ribbons on city life standards.
Yes.
So that would be an appropriate action of the council.
Do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the installation of purple ribbons in town for the Relay for Life.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And with that, we will be cleaning that up ourselves as well, May 10, the day after the
June 10.
I'm sorry, my memory. I apologize. We will be picking up after ourselves on the downtown streets of Woolly the day after the walk occurs.
That's very generous. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I had one question.
Yes.
Is there any way that we could reserve dunk take time for our chief of police and our, our fire chief?
Yeah, I mean, if you guys want to get in there, you 100% can. So.
And we would love to have both Dean and Lynn there, absolutely.
I'm sure they would gladly do it.
I think I could even make a donation to see that happen.
And Jared, I do know you from Woods Logging Supply, so you know, you can always come down to the tank yourself.
Where, where can I send an email with good information? Who should I?
Erin.
Yeah.
Erin, okay, wonderful.
You'll forward it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for giving your time. So with that, we will go ahead and start the staff report. So Chief Tucker, we'll start with you.
So on the first, we had our citywide active threat survival training for city employees. I think that went over pretty well. We did our basic training for all the employees that we could get in that day. And then we also did kind of a, just an idea brainstorming with a tabletop exercise. This is all being geared up towards a bigger city hall actual exercise later on this year. It's on, I think we've already got that programmed into Krista Salinas's emergency services contract. So we'll be letting you know when that's coming up, so you can either participate or come in and check things out. And one of the things that I've also thought of doing in that same vein is doing an abbreviated presentation of what we're doing at a city council meeting and make sure we, I guess, promote that just in case people want to see, kind of get an idea of what we've been presenting and what we're, what we're, I guess, looking at here. And I'm also going to be putting this out on kind of a 10 or 12-piece Facebook post that gives a lot of this information out on our Facebook page. Getting that information out to the public is our main goal. And I think our, our social media is going to be a pretty handy thing. So look for that coming up in the future. I actually had a request from Truck Vault to provide them some training. It's not threat survival, but it's on some firearms handling. So we'll be providing some training for Truck Vault later this month and into June. They wanted just some basic firearm safety, because a lot of their employees handle firearms. And they've got about 20 employees that they want some basic training on. So we might actually have that as a model for some other future training that we could provide to citizens as the need arises. So Truck Vault may be my guinea pig for that firearms safety course. You may have seen a couple of vehicles that, we got two brand-new patrol cars on our ERNR vehicle replacement program. So we're getting really close to having most of our Crown Vics out of the fleet. They're getting kind of long in the tooth and getting some, taking a beating. Those white Crown Vics, the paint starts peeling off of them. And pretty, if we keep them too much longer, they're going to be grays instead of white. A gray with the blue stripe. And it's not a pretty gray either. It's a bad gray. But if anybody's in the, in the market for a slightly used gray Crown Vic or two, we'll be putting some of those up for surplus and then having a few set around for spares. And I won't be here for the next city council meeting. I'll be at the Chiefs and Sheriff's Conference in Spokane, but I'll have one of my sergeants sitting in. I think it's kind of nice that you guys get to see some of my other leaders in the department and get a chance to hear from them and talk to them personally. So I'll see who's stuck, I mean, who gets to come to city council and hang out for an evening. And some, some of you may have seen the fire off of Cook Road that we had just the other day. We're keeping a close eye on that to make sure that they take care of that, that mess out there. Our code enforcement will be working on that. So if you had any question on that, feel free to ask. And I tell you, today was probably not one of my top 10 weird days, but it was getting close. It seems like it was mental health fail day. Got a call from the U.S. Capitol Police. We had a resident that was calling and ranting and raving on the phone to Maria Catwell's office. And then we had officers go out and chat with him, make sure everything was okay. He didn't like that idea, made a complaint about the police department, I think, to Erin, to the governor, probably to the FBI. And it had something to do with Nazis and rapists and pedophiles and cannibals, all in that same sentence. So it was kind of a weird day. And that was just one of the, one of the weird things. So it's been a really long day. And I hope Jared doesn't make it too long a city council meeting tonight, because I'm ready to go.
(LAUGHING).
That's all I have.
Once again, that's hard to follow. We've, just a couple updates. 3:15 Murdoch House over here, we got the asbestos abatement quotes in. Then they came in right around where we feared they would be. We're going to We're going to wait and hold off until Nathan gets back to actually award that, so that it's coordinated with getting the asbestos abated and getting the house torn down, so it doesn't stand there and look too ugly for too long. But hopefully, maybe by the next council meeting, we'll have a vacant lot over there. We don't know yet, we're hoping that that'll be that quickly. Tomorrow is a meeting on the training hub that we spoke about at the workshop. They're meeting over the EMS office. Frank will be, or excuse me, Todd will be attending that. And we'll get some more information, so I'll have some more information to bring back to you on that, on what their plan is for that. And just want to remind everybody, I'm sure someone else or Erin will be bringing it up, about the city works day on this Friday down there. So we'll have our equipment down there at the library area. So, that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. John?
You'll be hearing more from me later, so I'll just keep it brief. The planning commission is going to be working on the plan of residential development update again this month, and also on the, I believe it's a hearing on the 2019 to 2024 TIP, which is something that, it's a transportation plan that the Public Works Department puts together annually and brings it to the planning commission so they can review it before it comes to city council. So that's what's happening with the planning commission, and I'll be talking with you more briefly.
Thank you, John. Erin?
I've got several items on the agenda and nothing else to add.
Okay. Patty?
Since our last meeting, we had the exit conference with the state auditor's office on both the financial audit and the accountability audit. They were pleased with the way the city implemented the recommendations at a prior audit. There were no findings, no management letter, and they had one recommendation during the entire audit. They had, Tim Billingham had estimated the audit would be $32,000, and the cost of the audit will actually be $4,000 less. Now, they were very complimentary on city staff and were saying it was because we were so efficient in getting everything to them so quickly. But I suspect that the fact they had a lot of illness added somewhat to that reduction in cost as well. So that, I do have a copy of the exit report tonight. If you didn't have a chance to look at your email, that would be here. And they will be publishing the audits in the next couple weeks.
Well, I've got nothing but compliments. We have had two fires in the last decade, one directly across the alley from us, and one so close to my husband's office. And they were both knocked down so professionally, considering our volunteer fire departments.
Nice. Jermaine?
I just wanted to make everyone aware that there is a human trafficking and Skagit conference at the Northwest Careers and Technical Academy. I think you have to email, probably want to contact the college if you're interested in going to that. That's on Monday, pretty much all day from 9 to 3. One of my old college professors is teaching that or doing that conference. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Brenda?
Lucy.
Did you want to talk about the June 14th?
Paula?
Hi. So, I brought our poster in, and I should have brought more. I do have some more in the car, if anybody wants one. But this is for Blessed in the Past, it's on June 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. And the event is one of the three largest events that we do in Cedar Woolley, along with Lager Rodeo and Christmas. Although this is a three-day event, so it's closer to Lager Rodeo than the Christmas We also have some cards about signing up for the color run, which we do have purple going on the shirts, so that's thanks to Endeavor, which is no longer Endeavor, but anyway. There is an issue with registering online if you're doing the family value packet. If you have any problem with that, please call the office, we'll be glad to register you there. We don't want anybody to think we don't want them just because we're having a glitch. There's gremlins in the computer system of some sort through data bar. But it's only for the family packet, so if you're doing individual registrations, it still works fine. But that's Saturday morning, and we will start registrations for people who haven't pre-registered at 8:00, and then at 10:00 a.m. the run will start. And I just was given a check for a large family here out of the staff. Got about seven in that family. Yay. So we're going to make sure he gets lots of color. Anyway, thank you, and that's, if you have any questions, please let me know. I'm very excited about the event for Bobby Kelly tomorrow. She doesn't know it, but there is going to be a special presentation by some of her friends as well at that open house tomorrow. There are some other ones that are important, too. We have Cedar Woolley Auto Parts is celebrating 80 years in business. And Skagit Bank is at 60 years. And the North Cascades National Park is at 50 years. So, hope you all enjoy all of those places this summer.
Thank you, Paula. Chuck?
Yeah, I would like to ask Chief Klinger if he would elaborate a little bit on the exhibition in the senior center parking lot Friday for all the young kids, for you that have young kids, grandkids, great-grandkids, they have a ball and they love fire trucks and police cars. So if he could elaborate a little bit and the time, everything, we would appreciate it.
That'll be taking place, I believe it starts at noon or 11:00. Erin, do you, they'll be having vehicles 2 o'clock? 11 to 2, yeah. And I just know lunch is involved, that's all I care. Every department through the city will have a vehicle of some type down there. And so the kids get a chance to come down and tour the vehicles, go through them and talk to the guys. It's just a real fun time. And the weather, hopefully, will be excellent. It looks like it is, it's right now, it looks like it should be nice and sunny and warm. It'll be a great day down there at the park. It's just a lot of fun, so hopefully everybody will show up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it, Chuck?
Yeah, just, the sun has been out, and it's great to see people come down in Ward 6 and enjoy the park at Riverfront Park. I've been getting some comments about our resident free-range peacocks. So it's nice to see that folks enjoy the peacocks and that there are some that are not enjoying the peacocks. But it's good that we're talking about it. Which leads me to, the mayor was instrumental in a civic discourse. I'm sure we'll be talking more about that, so I'll keep that short. But it was fantastic to participate with that great diverse group and look forward to more of that participation as we talk about our civic virtue from all our different aspects of walks of life and our opinions. And I also wanted to say, just in case we don't get to Good Order, I wanted to wish everyone a happy Mother's Day.
Thank you. Carl, go ahead and talk about the civic discourse. Go ahead, yeah. You were there, too.
Yeah. So civic discourse was put on by the League of Women Voters, and it was a county ride discussion. It was very well attended, again, well diverse attendees from many municipalities and from many walks of life. We had a great panel up there that was, again, coming from folks that would like, that do protesting and folks that make sure everyone's safe that's protesting. And so it was interesting to get different perspectives. It was also a very well-guided discussion held by, I guess, the Scapalian Minister. And so that gave some gravitas to the meeting. There was great back and forth, there was breakout sessions of eight different tables of about 10 folks each, that we had some standardized questions, then reported back to the group that led to a very robust and comprehensive feedback with not only the panelists, but also with the room. And looking forward to this developing, they have a plan going forward of holding this in other municipalities, including Cedar Woolley. So I wanted to thank the mayor for participating and being part of that and also making the invite to the rest of us. It was a very beneficial, fruitful discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Jared?
I have no comments at this time.
Okay. Not even about dunking? So I just want to put out a reminder to the council that we have a strategic planning session. It's a day-long session on May 21st, it's from 9 to 4. So double-check your calendars, make sure that's on there. And I also want to actually let the public know about the Outstanding Service Award that our chiefs and their staff received last Thursday from the Cedar Woolley School District. And it had to do with all the cooperation and, you've heard, actually, Chief Tucker talk about the training that happens in the schools, the active shooting training. And then I think maybe what you don't hear a whole lot with Dean Klinger is that he actually, not only does he have training sessions here for his staff and his crew, but also they have other crews come in from around the area. So they just do a lot of great things and they were acknowledged. And I don't know that they were too enthused about being there, but I got to say, I was very proud of them because we have a great crew here in Cedar Woolley, we really do. Thank you. Let's see here. And then you mentioned Bobby's event and Thursday, and that's at 3:00. I didn't hear the time. So yeah, it's at 3:00 o'clock.
I forgot the time. It was on my, it was in my phone.
Oh, it's, okay. So that would be at 3:00 o'clock, if you want to pop into Cascade Fabrics and just wish her, you know, congratulations again. And then just one last thing, the Cedar Woolley Downtown Association, Brenda's very much a part of this, they're going to be having a open forum to the public from 6:00 to 8:00 on June 14th. I just give you the date and the time, but there's more information to come, and Brenda will be telling, sharing that with you at the next council meeting. All right. With that, we will move into public comments. It is 7:43, I'm going to open public comment. If you come up, please give your name and address and try to keep it within three minutes. Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Randy Good, 35, 482, State Route 20, Cedar Woolley. I guess just some observations to inform the council here. As you are entering Cedar Woolley from Burlington on Highway 20, traveling east, you see two separate bicycle routes, literally, side by side on the north side of Highway 20. U.S. Bicycle Route 10 is one of them, knowing full well, users will use the full length of Highway 20 as designated, and a brand-new shared-use route with extensions planned. Many East County residents travel this road twice or actually more daily. Once in a while, you'll see alone bicycles traveling alone on this wide paved shoulder of Highway 20, especially during, in that where there's a turn lane, but not on the new section before you get to the food pavilion. Traveling east again through the city, the side-by-side continues until township and Highway 20 stoplight, with only an occasional chicken walking down the bike route. We've seen that. Here, there's a huge backup with vehicles from the stoplight to the rodeo grounds of westbound traffic coming through. From township stoplight, another new bicycle route is planned on the north side of Highway 20, continuing the side-by-side, literally, to Fruitdale Road. Keep in mind, there is already a paved bike route on the south side of Highway 20, well-known as the Path of Corruption Cascade Trail. I attend many public transportation meetings where no input is allowed, where only a non-motorized advisory committee is allowed, where there is no advisory committee for vehicle commuters, agriculture, truckers, or schools. Okay, so this township and 20 intersection, the backup should have been and could have been addressed many years ago. Instead, there will be more of the side-by-side unused bike routes costing many millions more of tax dollars. Certain people wanted trails and paths instead. To think tax dollars earmarked for children and the schools had to be used to cover the city's share of building sidewalks at the school. Priorities, I think, of transportation dollars needs to be changed to safety and maintenance needs instead of recreational wants. The Cascade Trail, known as Path of Corruption, continues only now on steroids. That's my observation. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Randy. Anyone else? Okay, I will close the public comment at 7:47. And we will move on to unfinished business, and I guess you're up, huh, John?
So this is a second read of the 2017 Comprehensive Plan Updates. The last meeting, I gave a fairly comprehensive explanation of what's being updated and what the changes were. Just briefly, the planning commission made recommendations to update the transportation element, the parks and recreation element, and the comprehensive land use map. That is, those changes are shown in ordinance 18, and if ordinance 18, sorry, not, Attachment 1, which is ordinance to be determined dash 18.
Help me out, John, I'm having a hard time hearing it, can you get the mic a little closer? Thanks, bud.
So those, the changes to the Comprehensive Plan would be in one ordinance, and then there's also simultaneous adoptions of amendments to the zoning map, and that would be in a separate ordinance. On the council agenda, there's a recommendation, and it separates the two different motions for two different ordinance updates. In reference to the Comprehensive Plan update, I mentioned that one of the items that was worked on was the Parks and Recreation Element. I brought that to, the last time I brought it here to the council was before the city was offered the recreation property at the Swift Center. So with the council's permission, I made updates to what the planning commission recommended to change in the Parks and Rec element update. Those changes were included, I just amended it to include the facts and figures based on the new parkland that is likely to become part of the city, be included in the city parks lands that the city owns. Those changes that have been made since the last time I brought this to the council, I highlighted in yellow in your packet, so this should be, hopefully, easy enough to tell what the changes were. If there's any questions about any of that, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise I'd be asking for motion to, two motions, one to adopt Otherwise, I'd be asking for motion to, two motions, one to adopt the recommended change in the transportation, to the Comprehensive Plan, and another motion to update the zoning map.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah. I would like to thank the Planning Commission for all the hard work of digging through all the minutia and the details and really dovetailing to ordinances and looking forward. It is amazing work that has been done here. And I would like to move ordinance to adopt the amendments to the transportation element, Parks and Recreation Element, Comprehensive Land Use Map, all included in the Cedar Woolley Comprehensive Plan.
Second, you said? Okay. So motion was made by Councilman DeYoung and seconded by Councilman Owen. It is a motion to adopt our ordinance, and this will be Ordinance 1897-18, amending the transportation element, Parks and Recreation Element, and the Comprehensive Land Use Map, all included in the Cedar Woolley Comprehensive Plan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make another motion. I would like to move the amendments to, adopt the amendments to the Cedar Woolley zoning map.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion made by Councilman DeYoung and seconded by...
All the women.
Councilwoman Carnegie. The motion is to adopt Ordinance 1898-18, amending the Cedar Woolley zoning map. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So I see here on page 51, too, that there was a ordinance regarding the amendments, the memo, including Exhibits A, B, and C.
On which page?
Was on 51.
Yeah, that was the, that was the template I gave the council so that they...
Okay. Okay. All right. And then, let's see here, we're going to move on to new business. Is this going to be you, Aaron? Are you going to talk about the SHKS architect agreement?
Yes, so we've got two items now on the agenda. The new library, the one, the council memo beginning on page 212 titled New Library Project and Late Materials item titled Real Estate Acquisition for New Library Project. So there's really four questions before the council and a request for four separate actions. So I think I'll cover all four of these together since they're all interrelated, beginning with the memo that starts on page 212. So the contract with SHKS has been something that we've been working on for a while now. Just by way of background, the city and the library district have developed the three separate interlocal agreements detailing the relationship. And under the Building Joint Development and Ownership Agreement, the city is the lead entity for contracting purposes. Also, under that agreement, the supervisor and the district director are the co-owner representatives and managers of the project for purposes of that agreement. The, so Jean and I, in that role, have drawn in the mayor and the district chairperson as well as Roger Howard, our technical advisor, to kind of create a committee of five to be working directly with the architects on those details as we move through. We've identified two key touchpoints in the design process for the city council, the district board, and the public, one at 30% design and another at 90% design. So our thought is we would take the entire pre-designed process, which included the robust public participation, and implement that to the 30% level. We'll have a joint meeting between the district board of trustees and the city council with the public present for the architects to really walk through what they've laid out in terms of the design to match the pre-designed report and the program that gets developed. That leaves plenty of opportunity then for, you know, modifications, updates, questions, answers, et cetera. Do that again at 90%. And at that point, timeline-wise, we're looking at 90%, probably mid-September if everything stays on the critical path, 30% end of June. So we're moving fairly quickly. That then kicks off the construction document phase, which runs really from that point, 100% design to bid and add, which will be first thing, 2019. So our target date is to have this on the street for bidding in February of 19 and construction beginning then shortly thereafter with a construction window estimated to be somewhere in the nine, nine-to-12-month phase. So occupancy then in spring of 2020. So it's moving quickly, yet when you actually draw it all out, you know, there's a lot of steps. So the first step that we're at right now is cementing the Architectural Services Agreement with SHKS. You have the negotiated agreement in your packet. That's the recommended agreement from the committee I described. Both Jean and I are recommending it to the city council. It's a big number. It's $693,900. That includes a design phase contingency, but it's also, there's quite a lot of work going into this project. So you can see how that agreement is detailed. There's a combination of lump-sum services as well as hourly services with a do-not-exceed. And for those, all of those elements, there are specifically defined scopes for the services. So we know what we're buying and what it will cost. The hourly with a do-not-exceed, of course, the hope is that we might pay less than the do-not-exceed, but that risk is really on the architectural firm to ensure that the scope is achieved even if the hours run out. So we're protected in that case. So that's that with the first item. The second item in the packet then is a resolution addressing project management responsibilities and delegating contract authority under certain terms and conditions. What we're trying to achieve here is really implementation of the agreements. So it's, the city's the contracting authority, so we will walk through all of the steps necessary for the city of Cedar Woolley to comply with its own internal codes, policies, and procedures to acquire services. SHKS is a good example. You know, we went through the formal advertisement. We interviewed architects through the RFQ, perfect request for qualifications. We made a recommendation based upon committee work and came up with a top architect to negotiate with and then ultimately negotiated for pre-design work. And as part of that selection process, we left the door open to have that same firm do the design work. So we're following the requirements for a code city to acquire that level of service. What we're trying to do here, though, is really allow the project to move forward consistent with that process, with the city council's adopted budget, with the multiple interlocal agreements between the city and the district, and not bring back to the council every agreement that pops up that's in excess of $10,000. So this resolution delegates authority up to project budget based upon those items. And, you know, you will be getting the full project budget as we start to develop our, you know, our next round, I would guess, of 2018 budget amendments. So at this point, if that resolution had been passed, I would not be able to sign the SHKS agreement because it's not in the budget yet. That would have to come back to you. Once that was in the budget, then that would be an example of an agreement that would be delegated authority if you adopt the resolution that I proposed tonight. So just to give you an example of that. So that's those two items, and I think I'll just roll right into the late materials items because I think they're all related. So the committee's been working with the architectural team on the site. We're confident we can build a library on the site that the city has purchased for the partnership. We happen to believe, however, that we could build a superior site if we owned a larger piece of property. The neighboring property where the Iron Skillet is located has been on the real estate market for, I think approximately, two years. So the city approached the owner of that business and building and has negotiated a purchase and sale agreement, which you have on your days. So the terms of that agreement are, purchase price is $535,000 for the business and the building. Obviously, we'd like to just buy the building, but that's not what's for sale. So this is a market transaction with a willing seller and a negotiated buyer for everything that's for sale there. We're currently in the agreement, the closing would occur at the end of June, on June 29th, and possession would occur at the end of September. So that was something that was important to Reba, to have the ability to wrap up her business orderly. The only contingency in the agreement is a 20-day feasibility, which began today. And of course, the agreement is subject to ratification of the city council. So in terms of feasibility contingency, really the issues that we're concerned about are fairly limited. We've requested a Phase 1, same as we did with the 100 West State Street site, and we've requested a survey for asbestos and lead, just so we can capture the reasonable estimate of demolition costs. In terms of the Phase 1, we've got some preliminary information that it's possible that there's an underground storage tank on that site based upon a use prior to Reba's ownership. We have not seen or have any verification, but that's something that we've asked the environmental consultant to pay special attention to. Clearly, that's an issue that we'll want to understand completely before we, you know, terminate that feasibility phase. I wanted you to know about that as well. So with this $535,000 purchase, of course, the question that's probably coming up is, well, how do you pay for it? You know, we've, we've got a library we want to build, we're concerned about square footage, we don't want to detract from that. So what I've proposed in this late materials memo is that we, at the city of Cedar Woolley, that we contribute an additional $208,034 to the project, which would be 41% of $507,400, meaning the district would be asked then to contribute $299,366 in additional cash for that purpose. So why $507,400? That seems like a strange number when the purchase price is $535,000 with some closing costs. And the answer is, in the agreement between the city and the district, the city will be compensated 5% of the construction contract, which we are currently estimating will be at least $4.17 million, which generates $208,500. So what I'm asking you to do is to commit the dollars that you would be generating through the staff work that goes into administering this project. In other words, no question value to the project, but it's not dollars out of a particular fund or account. It's dollars that we would potentially receive if we wanted to as part of that contract. So it's in-kind contribution. And for the district, there are dollars then are, you know, it's really up to them how they want to address that. But that generates that additional half a million dollars to acquire the site without affecting our current project budget. And our current project budget, just for a refresher, includes $5 million in debt proceeds, $1.5 million from the state of Washington, which is really $1,455,000 after we pay the state of Washington for sending us the money from the state of Washington. Which is funny, you know, you're kind of happy to pay the fee when you're getting the money, but on the other hand, you know, it's 1.455 million is the net. And then we estimate about $360,000 will be contributed between the two partners during this calendar year prior to the issuance of debt. So it's that total that would be used then for site acquisition, all the design phase work, including subconsultants, you know, a survey, topo work, geotechnical work, archaeological survey work, all the normal process that goes into this sort of project, as well as building the building. And, and that's the key. You know, we've got a number of touchstones, and ultimately, our architect, kind of relating back to the first element of this, is responsible for designing a building that their cost estimators believe will not exceed the maximum allowable construction cost that we set based upon our budget that you and the district board of trustees approve. And right now, we've built into that SHKS agreement a flexible MAC, Maximum Allowable Construction Cost, without a change in architectural service fees. So we've, we've built ourselves some wiggle room because we had the SHKS agreement negotiated prior to knowing for sure if we were going to be able to bring to you this Iron Skillet acquisition scenario. So with regard to the light materials, that's pretty much the whole package. And what's attached then are two resolutions. One is a resolution that ratifies the purchase and sale agreement that I've executed with Reba and authorizes the mayor to execute the necessary documents and the finance director to issue annual payments to close the transaction. And secondarily, a different resolution that authorizes an interfund loan to address cash flow. I've put in there, I think, $550,000. We, we don't think we'll need that because we anticipate that the district would contribute its additional cash as part of that closing to ensure that we don't have to borrow to fund this while we wait for our permanent funding to come to place. So with that, I've got, of course, I'll take any questions, and ultimately, I'm looking for four different motions.
Any questions?
What's the...
Go ahead.
What's the library district's position or thoughts or on this?
I'm sorry, did you ask where the dunk tank will be stationed on June 9th so you can find your way?
We won't have a problem. I'll follow Chief Tucker.
Well, so, you know, we've, we've got one district trustee here. I won't presume to speak for the board, but, you know, we're working closely with the chair of the board. My understanding is, you know, they'll be presented with the same budgeting proposal and I don't know if that's likely to be... When's your next meeting then? Next couple, couple weeks, maybe?
Seventeen.
Yeah. So I would guess that they would actually take action at their next meeting to address that particular budgetary concern.
And in the, assuming that this all does proceed as planned, is there any, I guess, considerations that the city needs to have over owning the property for the three months while Reba's still running her business?
So we've got a, you know, commercial brokerage form rental agreement that allows her occupancy and establishes her roles and responsibilities. Of course, the city will ensure the property from the moment of ownership. I don't see a lot of concerns. You know, what, what we would anticipate is that at the close of the business, because the city would be acquiring the whole package minus the memorabilia on the walls, is that we would probably auction off the equipment and tools and, you know, all the trade equipment after she's done running it. But our expectation would be that she would run it till she's done, and then when she packs up, it would be left just like it is today as a restaurant minus the memorabilia.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there are no more questions, why don't we start with the first, which happens to be the SHKS architect, looking for a motion for the council to approve the attached agreement with SHKS Architects for designing the new library project?
I move that we approve the attached agreement with SHKS Architects for designing the new library project.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Dunley and Councilwoman Carnegie, a second by Councilwoman Carnegie, to approve the attached agreement with the SHKS Architects for designing the new library project.
I have a comment there.
Okay.
I had the opportunity to have SHKS present to the Chamber of Commerce last fall, and I personally felt very, very impressed, not only with that presentation, but what they did here in the city council chambers and one that they did as a planning session upstairs. They have impressed me a great deal with their professionalism, with the projects that they've worked on before, and I look forward to a great new library.
Thank you. So no other, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Who's opposed? And carries? The second is the resolution. This would be resolution... The second is the resolution, this would be Resolution 989-18, approving, let's see, addressing project management responsibilities and delegating contracting authority to the city supervisor under certain terms and conditions for the new library project. Any motion? Any, any discussion? Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move that we may approve the resolution authorizing the city to, mayor to execute the necessary documents to acquire the real property known as 132 West State Street, the Iron Skillet.
Actually, we are, we're doing, we are on the...
Oh, wrong one.
Yeah. So this is actually on page 212, on your, in your...
That's dead.
Okay. So what I am looking for is, it's on page 212, it is the second issue, and it is...
The one about Erin? I make a motion to approve the attached resolution addressing project management responsibilities and delegating contracting authority to the city supervisor under certain terms and conditions for the new library project.
Okay. Okay. So we had a motion by Councilwoman Cornigay and seconded by Councilman Owen, and this is Resolution 989-18, approving the attached resolution addressing project management responsibilities and delegating contracting authority to the city supervisor under the certain terms and condition for the new library project. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? She carries. So then, actually, late materials on the back of the first page is where you will find the recommendations. The first recommendation is motion to adopt Resolution 989-18, ratifying the purchase and sale agreement and authorizing the mayor to execute necessary documents to complete the additional land acquisition for the new library.
So moved.
All right. So, all right. So I have a motion by Councilman DeYoung and seconded by Councilwoman Kinzer.
It was Couch.
Oh, sorry, Couch. Motion made by Councilwoman Couch and seconded by Councilwoman Kinzer, Resolution 989-18, ratifying the purchase-and-sale agreement and authorizing the mayor to execute necessary documents to complete the additional land acquisition for the new library. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then the last motion is to adopt Resolution 990-18, authorizing an interfund loan from Fund 302 to Fund 305 to purchase additional land for the new library.
So moved.
So we had a motion by Councilwoman Kelly and seconded by Councilwoman Kinzer. It is a motion to adopt Resolution 990-18, authorizing an interfund loan from Fund 302 to Fund 305 to purchase additional land for the new library. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on, it looks like informational items. Are there any questions or comments regarding the informational items? Anything for the good of the order?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Good of the order. Looks like great news from Washington State Department of Transportation that Highway 20, the pass, will be open on Friday morning.
Yes, that is good news. All right. And I am going to add that Sketchet PUD is, they will be installing new water lines along Township Street in Seidra Wully on Monday, May 21st. Their crews are scheduled to begin working at night to limit the impact for traffic and schools. And for SR 20 and Township intersection, the hours of construction will be from 6:00 PM to 4:30 AM, Monday through Thursday. They say this portion of the construction is expected to last four weeks.
Do we have any background? I know Mark's not here. Do we have any reason why they're switching to, to night work? They've terrorized the community for months already with poor roadwork and patch jobs. So do we have any reason why we're doing it at night now?
I did not receive any information of the ones in front of me. It came from Mark, and Mark, as you know, is not here, so.
We can certainly find out and get that back to you. Normally, the reason they switch to night work is they're just moving into a more congestive area and/or the services that won't be on are, you know, less impactful at night.
Yes.
I know with WashDOT, it, it just comes down to traffic counts. So for them, they want to come in at night when there's nobody on the highway so they can close it more conveniently. But we can certainly find out, get that back to you.
Okay.
I add that my business was already impacted by just the work that they were doing. I've had clients showing up an hour late, calling me, saying that they were stuck. And so, yeah. And then there's the school, and they're...
So we do have, if there's anything more for the good of the order, we do have executive session. It is litigation RCW 42.30.1110, Section 1, Section I. It'll be about 10 minutes, no action, and...
See that she's going like that here?
All right. Is that adjourned? We are adjourned?
Let's do it.
So moved.
We are adjourned.
Second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth.
Sorry, Julia. All right. We're here.
No.